I'm going to dive right in here with you two candidates. I'm going to start with you Nancy Fry. Nancy, an issue that's on the minds of a lot of people in Coconut Creek is the proposed widening of Florida's Turnpike. It's not just Coconut Creek either. It's between Wiles Road and 595. So that's a big stretch in Broward. What is your position on the Turnpike widening and how should the city be dealing with it?
I am absolutely opposed to widening the Turnpike especially into our neighborhoods. Right now, what FDOT is proposing would significantly cut into the backyards of Coconut Creek residents. And I am absolutely opposed to it. And I will continue to speak out publicly against it. Anytime that we have an opportunity to get in front of the public and inform them what's going on. That's the most important because it's going to be the civic engagement and all of the residents coming together. And speaking to FDOT and telling them, we don't accept this as an option for our neighborhoods. That's the only way we're going to be able to to fight this and win this fight.
The Department of Transportation is a big, one of the biggest state agencies. The person who runs DOT is in effect, not literally, but pretty close, is appointed by Governor Ron DeSantis. What's a strategy? What's the vision? How do you stop something like this Nancy?
I mean, Coconut Creek is a city that's used to being in these, what I like to call David and Goliath battles. We are currently in the midst of a lawsuit with the state regarding firearm preemption. So I think we have a smart, competent staff. We have passionate residents. And I think that we, when we're all banding together, we're going to be able to figure out how to fight the Goliath, that is FDOT, and make our voices heard and make it known that this is not an acceptable option.
Okay. Tell us on a personal level, how proximity, how close do you personally live to the Turnpike?
I would have to check the exact measurements. I am on the west side of Lyons. So I don't know the exact mileage, but it's it's not very far. It personally would not hit my backyard, but if I'm representing Coconut Creek, I'm representing all of Coconut Creek. And it's about the residents whose backyards do face the Turnpike, and there's a significant number of them. I've been knocking doors and I see the Turnpike sound barriers as they are are so close to people's residences. And to have that come closer is unacceptable.
Okay, Alfred, tell us, tell us your thoughts about this same issue. And by the way, I say this parenthetically, I mean, it's not over till it's over. But it's also, it's also not a good thing to necessarily to make people in Coconut Creek, the residents, I mean, make them think that this project can be stopped if in fact bureaucratically it might be unstoppable at this point. So tell us, tell us what your thoughts are about preventing this from happening.
So number one, I want to make clear, I'm opposed to the expansion of the Turnpike. They're talking about at this point, the Turnpike stands at six lanes and they want to expand it to a total of 10, add an additional four, which by the way, would all be on Coconut Creek's side. Number one. Number two, I don't, there's, I think there's few things that are inevitable. Okay. One of the things that I have found in the past in working with communities to protect those communities is that oftentimes the stakeholders that seem to have the leverage, the Goliath, so to speak, as Nancy was referring to, oftentimes, one of the ways that they try to dissuade the community from expressing their dissatisfaction with the proposed plans is that they'll say it's inevitable. And that's how they start out. But once you get the community involved, once they're activated, which knocking on doors, going door to door, a lot of people don't know, when I talk to them, a lot of them don't know that they're actually contemplating an expansion. And I think that could be the key shift. That could be the shift that occurs that dissuades FDOT from pursuing the expansion. But I don't think that anything is inevitable at this point. From my understanding, they're at the planning stages of this, which which opens up a door there for us to potentially stop it outright. So that is still within the realm of possibility first. Secondly, as I understood it, they also don't have the funding for it yet. So that is not materialized either. So I think that at this point, the proposal is precisely that. It is a proposal. It is nascent and therefore subject to being completely eliminated if we are able to mobilize enough people. And I've worked with the community organizations on other matters in the past where the, those that wanted to construct certain developments, things like that, would come out and say, well, it's inevitable. Then the next thing they would say is, well, it's going to create jobs. And then lastly, they would acquiesce to the fact that the community didn't want there and it was not pursued. So I've seen the tactics before. I'm familiar with them. And I know how to work with communities to empower them so that they can ultimately stop something of this sort.
Okay. All right. Very good. And tell us, Alfred, as you understand it, help us with the geography. If this were to happen, this 10-lane Turnpike in Coconut Creek, how close does that widened Turnpike back up to backyards in Windmore?
So at this point, one of the proposals is that it would get it close enough to that it's actually within five feet of a sound barrier there near Windmore. And as I've been telling residents both of Windmore and other areas, it would, it would be so close that I think that they should be paying HOA dues if they're going to be that close to Windmore. We know the bottom line insofar as any highway expansion or Turnpike expansion. One of the things that I forgot to mention, if we're going to fight it, one of the things is just pull up the data. The New York Times recently had an article about two weeks ago that came out dealing with this matter of expanding highways and how though initially, initially, you may get some, some increase in terms of speed, right? And convenience, what ultimately happens is that in no time at all, word gets out that, hey, you know what? There's additional lanes to the Turnpike, traffic is moving faster, everybody rushes in. And ultimately, you end up with the same kind of inconveniences, the same kind of congestion, et cetera. But now you've got more of it, number one. And number two, time and again, the, the American Lung Association and other entities that have studied the matter have found that highway pollution leads to asthma and other issues. And bringing the Turnpike that close to seniors is in no way going to advance their interests. So, and last point I'll quickly make is that the Turnpike is actually close enough that I can actually hear it here from, from my backyard. We've got soot in my back patio furniture that we have to wipe off roughly every two days or thereabouts. So it's close enough that on, on, on cool crisp days, you can actually hear the Turnpike loudly. And as I told my wife, one time as we were sitting back there, we will never know probably a quiet moment there in the backyard because of the fact that you can always hear the traffic.
Okay. Let me go back to Nancy Fry just for a moment and more biographical for the moment. Nancy, you've, let's see, you've, you've been involved with the Young Democrats. You've been a, you've been a legislative aide, that may not be the right term, but I know you from having worked for Steve Glassman in Fort Lauderdale. And tell us what else is relevant in your, in your biography and why you're running for this office.
All right. So off the lip at first, I'll talk about why I'm running. And then that will lead into the biographical information. I'm running first and foremost because we need young representation on the dais. And that speaks to my involvement with the Young Democrats. We need to make sure that the 60% plus families, young families that live in this city are, have a voice, that we're not being represented by folks that are exclusively over 40. We need to make sure that young families, families with children have a voice and have the perspective of someone that's been through entering the job market post-Great Recession. That's had to buy a house in the housing market that we are dealing with now. These are very specific perspectives that if you haven't lived it, it's very difficult to understand, even hearing anecdotally, if you have not been through fighting for financing for your home and having to delay buying a home because your husband's student loan debt is affecting your ability to get financing, you don't know what it's like to fight those battles. So that's where I'm running. As far as my biographical information, I actually don't come from the world of politics originally. My degrees are both in the arts. I have a bachelor's degree in music business and a master's degree in arts presenting. And my previous work experience prior to politics and government was actually working at the Arts Center in Miami and Bragg Center for Performing Arts in Fort Lauderdale. I then became a stay-at-home mom for a while, which is another perspective that I really hope to bring to the dais. I have been every incarnation of stay-at-home to working mom on the spectrum. I've been a stay-at-home working, or a work-from-home mom. I've been a part-time working mom. I've been a full-time away-from-home working mom, which most recently was my experience working for Commissioner Glassman. And I come from having the experience of working in municipal government. I worked for the city of Fort Lauderdale as a commission aide, so I've seen the job before. I've helped with the job. I've done the constituent services. I've worked with city staff to get things accomplished. And I developed a very near and dear love for municipal government, as nerdy as that sounds, working for Commissioner Glassman and being involved locally in the community. And I just want to bring that passion and that knowledge to the commission.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't sound nerdy to us in the least. It's very good. But, but I got to say this, that, and we'll get to this more a little bit later, but that's a very good explanation you've given us. And you're both, you're both, you know, of the same generation, obviously. And I, it's, it's still, you know, the demographics in Coconut Creek are changing dramatically. And the question is, we know the people, the retirees in Windmore, you know, good for them. They're, they're, they're all going to vote. They don't need to be reminded four or five times to vote. They'll be voting. The question is, will those young moms and dads in the township and Centura Park or these other places in Coconut Creek, will they be voting on March 14? That's an important question. Do you agree?
Absolutely. And that is a pivotal part of my campaign. I have made it all, I've put it all over my, my materials. Everyone I talk to, that's the first talking point because frankly, people in Coconut Creek are very happy with where they live. And they don't really bring forth a lot of issues sometimes, but they are so grateful just to have the knowledge of that they need to re-register for vote by mail, that all the vote by mail requests expired at the end of last year. They're grateful to know where their polling site is. They might not know where it is. I've had to look up numerous polling sites for people or once I knew where it was, let them know at additional doors. And people are grateful for the knowledge. And it's not from a lack of desire to participate. It's just comes from a lack of knowledge. And I think it's incumbent upon the city. And I think it's incumbent upon every candidate and everyone that wants to be involved civically to let their friends and neighbors know that this is the government closest to you. And you need to participate in your municipal elections just as much as you do those presidential elections, those midterm elections, that this is the one that's going to affect you the most day to day, and you need to get out the vote.
Very good. How long have you lived in Coconut Creek?
I'm coming up on two years in Coconut Creek. And I would like to put a little disclaimer on this message because I know that I like and I dislike this question because this is what it is to be a millennial. We move around a lot. And so sometimes I get a little bit of a jump back when I give that answer. But I wanted to live in Coconut Creek for a long time before I was able to actually financially move here. I had studied the city in depth, and this was the only city I wanted to move to. And it was the issue of finances and making sure that I had not just a job, but the right type of job that the bank would accept, that my husband's income was enough to make up for his student loan debt. And this is what millennials face and Gen Z now faces when trying to reach that homeownership level of generating wealth, of trying to make sure that they're in a place where they can both afford to work and afford to live. And these are the questions that are going to come up, especially as our city becomes younger and becomes more developed. We have the Main Street development coming up. There's going to be homes coming in there. And we need to make sure that that is accessible to young folks and it's where young folks want to live.
Okay. I appreciate your candor and going into the details on that. That's, and that's something with, with which a lot of people can identify. Alfred, how long have you lived in Coconut Creek?
It's going to be eight years this year.
Okay. You're an attorney.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. What, what factor or factors prompted you to want to run for elective office?
Well, amongst them were, we live in a beautiful city. We really do. And learning more about the existential threats that face our city. So the landfill, Mount Trashmore, Monarch Hill, that, that proposed expansion there, I remember when I moved here and then discovered east, eastbound on Wiles, looking down Wiles, seeing this, this mountain. And it was just surreal for the topography that we have in Florida, which is mainly flatland. And it just seemed, I thought to myself, well, what is that? And when I found out what it was, that it was a landfill, and then as, as the years have gone by, seeing the, the attempts to, to continue to expand that thing, I became concerned about what's going to happen to the city. And then also the expansion of the Turnpike. That was another concern, that we may live in a beautiful city at the moment, but how long will that last if these storm clouds continue to gather and head our way? And I think that's the crossroads that the city finds itself in at this point. Beautiful amenities, beautiful city, beautiful people, very cordial. But at the end of the day, how long are people going to want to live here if the quality of life collapses due to the pollution that arises? People talk about it all the time as I've been knocking on doors with regards to, to the smell from the landfill. And then also with regards to the noise from the, from the Turnpike. If those, I think those two things are categorical and existential threats. So that's really one of the concerns that I had. The other concern that I had was when I found out the allegations that the former city commissioner for whose seat we are running didn't even live in the city, according to the allegations that I've heard. And I just thought, we need somebody here that, that's, that's, that's living in the city at a minimum. I think a commissioner in representing their city should at a minimum live in their city. So those three were, were fundamental concerns. Lastly, lastly, I'm looking at, at, at my children. My, both my children were born here in Coconut Creek. And my concern is that they stay here. Obviously, parents want their, or want their kids nearby, but I just want to make sure that they're able to grow up here should they choose to stay here. But that they are not basically, that they don't have to leave, that the family doesn't have to leave and that other families don't have to leave because they're not able to live in the city. Because as a result of the, of the landfill expanding and the Turnpike expanding, property values collapse. The tax base that comes and the revenue that come from those property values then is diminished, less services for, for residents. And as a consequence of that, also the schools, which are based off of those, which are funded through those revenues, also decline. That's my fundamental concern. I'm asking myself the question is, where will we be in 10 years? And I really do feel that this needs to be addressed with vigor and, and a sense of urgency. So that's why I decided to run.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to, I'm going to let my colleague Dan Sweeney join the question. Go ahead Dan.
Thanks. Alfred, you were in the running against Brody for the appointment, were you not?
That is correct, sir.
Why do you think they didn't select you at the time?
That you would have to ask the commission? I'm not certain. I'm not certain. What was, what was interesting to me is that the, the, the members of the community that had put themselves forward as applicants to fill the vacancy for the seat, the majority of them, when asked if you could not vote for yourself, who would you vote for? The majority of them agreed that, that they would vote for me as a, as the commissioner to fill the seat. But as to how, what were the, what was the thinking behind the commissioner's ultimate decision? I do not know. You would have to ask them directly.
Okay. Both of you have mentioned the landfill and the Turnpike expansion, which we, we just got done talking with the, the candidates for seat A or District A. And, and it's, it's a deja vu all over again here. Because that, that's pretty much the, you know, the, the big issue there as well. The thing is, you know, the, the county really has a lot of responsibility for Monarch Hill. And the Department of Transportation has a lot, you know, to do with the Turnpike. So what can you as a community do to stave off these things? And as part of that, what exactly is the alternative that you would bring to these other governments, the county and the state? Because if you say you can't do this, the next question is going to be, well, what would you have us do, you know? So Alfred, let's start with you. What, both on the, on the, on the dump and also on the Turnpike extension, what's, what's the alternative?
Okay. So with regards to the landfill, number one, the, the county and several municipalities were part of, up until 2013, they were part of what was called the Resource Recovery Board, the RRB. It sunset in 2013. And after that, it was, it was a free-for-all waste management then came ultimately in on controlling and running the landfill. What the county and surrounding cities near the landfill are now pursuing is an inter-local agreement or ILA. And the, the organizing entity, the venue to pursue this ILA is the Solid Waste Working Group, which I've been virtually attending those meetings for, I think, about a year now and just observing that. Basically, what the ILA intends to do is, is to put it as simply as I possibly can, to create a constitution. Okay. That ILA would be the constitution. Okay. So the Solid Waste Working Group creates the ILA. Okay. They are in the process of drafting that. That ended for about two years. And the ILA would in essence be the constitution, which then creates an authority, the government, so to speak. The authority would basically place control of the landfill and how it's managed back in the hands of the public, namely the cities and the county, the participating cities and county. So that's where we're at with it right now. My concern is, and so I think that that is the avenue to produce an alternative whereby instead of the landfill being run for profit, right? Because if I'm running any kind of organization for profit and especially a landfill, at the end of the day, the consequences to the surrounding communities, right, are secondary to my fundamental goal of making money. And if making money is best achieved through expanding the landfill, then guess what? That's what I'm going to do ultimately. If you put the landfill and, and its management back in public control, the people have a say ultimately as to how that's run. And the public interest is what dominates rather than the profit motive there. Okay? So that is the alternative. The alternative is the ILA. And my, my concern, going back to the issue of acting with vigor and a sense of urgency, is that while the ILA is still being debated and drafted, okay, the company that runs the landfill is moving full steam ahead to expand it. And part of the argument is, well, there's nothing, there's no other game in town. We're the only game in town. If we get that ILA done, if we get the authority created and consequently allow the, the county and cities to take control over the landfill, I think you're going to get a, a better outcome, number one. Number two, we achieve an alternative that is focused more so on increasing recycling because one of the objectives of the Solid Waste Working Group is to increase recycling up to 75% within the county. That's not something that I'm aware of, that the company that's running the landfill at this point is even pursuing. Okay? So that's, that's the alternative there. Insofar as the Turnpike expansion, again, this issue of induced demand, which I referred to before, if you build it, they will come. If you build an additional four lanes, you're going to get more traffic guaranteed. I feel that FDOT really, and, and, and has not considered alternatives. I think they're kind of locked into, well, this is what's worked. It's a flawed solution, but let's have some more of it. I think ultimately what we have to promote is a stronger alliance between the, the cities that are going to be affected by this proposed expansion of the Turnpike and then pursue other mobility options, public transportation that's more convenient, perhaps public transportation within cities that are not fixed routes. I know Wilton Manners and other cities have, have micro travel options whereby they, they might even take you home. So pursue those other alternatives and then also local roads. We need to improve the infrastructure there. At this point, the city toward that end of finding alternatives to the Turnpike expansion is actually pursuing a master transport plan. They're, they're in the process. Coconut Creek is in the process of pursuing this. So it's not as though there aren't alternatives there. My issue is that they come to fruition in a much more expedited fashion, number one. And number two, that our residents are better informed about these alternatives because then I think they'll be very much interested in going to these meetings with FDOT and other stakeholders and vociferously expressing the fact that, hey, look, we got other alternatives. We don't have to go down that road. And the last thing I'll say is that to that point that I made earlier, it is only at the proposal phase. So I, I think that, that really opens up a window for us to be effective if we can come up with these, with these alternatives in such a way that the residents are aware of them, number one, and that they've actually come into being, so to speak, that the ILA has now led to the authority, rather than wondering whether, hey, is this ILA ever going to produce anything? And I think that's what I would bring is a sense of know-how, of focused preparation, and then also the urgency.
I wanted to get Nancy's take on that too. What, you know, is there anything he didn't cover there? Any, any, any opening you see for how the, the city can, can sort of avoid these, these dual major expansions and, and offer an alternative to the, the powers that be?
Absolutely. First and foremost, we need to work with our partners at the county and at the state level. I myself have generated a, a network over my time of being an activist in the community for years. And, and that's demonstrated, not to, not to tout my endorsements, but that, that's a good indicator of the networks that I have at the county, at the state level. I've been endorsed by folks such as Property Praiser Marty Kear at the county level, at the state level. I've been endorsed by our local senator Tina Polsky, who represents Coconut Creek amongst other cities, Senator Jason Pissot, Senator Lauren Book, Representative Marie Woodson. And these are the folks that we need to utilize to help bring our voice to the county and to the state to have allies in that fight and to be able to not just work by ourselves, but, but to work as a community, as a county and as a state to battle both of these issues. And to the point that Mr. Delgado was making about demand, if we reduce demand, then we don't have the need as much for either of these expansions. And FDOT is a little bit more difficult because as Mr. Delgado said, they're inducing demand. But we need to talk more about making sure that we have businesses hiring within the city so folks don't need to take the Turnpike to get to a job in Fort Lauderdale or get to a job in Boca or somewhere else that requires them to take the Turnpike. And we need to look at making sure we have employability within the city. I think the landfill, that's a place where we can do a lot of work because the main crux of why they want to get that land use plan amendment is because they're saying the landfill is getting to capacity. First and foremost, as a disclaimer, Coconut Creek does not send trash to the landfill. We send trash to the waste-to-energy plant, but we need to reduce our waste consumption. We need to utilize waste-to-energy more. And we need to look at other uses for that site that will reduce the county's dependence on using the landfill. Maybe looking at commercial composting, for example, that would significantly decrease the amount of waste going to the landfill that would necessitate that expansion to begin with. And it's just about finding creative solutions and just getting everybody on board. It's about utilizing all of our networks. I know that the, the existing, the sitting commissioners right now in the other districts have wide networks as well. And we can use those and use, just again, all of us working together, teamwork, not to be cheesy, but if we all work as a team, we can make more influence than what these entities want us to think they have.
Nancy, are you also an advocate, like Mr. Delgado, are you a supportive supporter of this regional solid waste authority, this inter-local agreement idea?
Yes. And I, I too am familiar with some of the meetings when I was.
This is Commissioner Beam Fur's big project, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Nancy, I wanted to ask you a little historical question because there's a lot of new residents in Coconut Creek. Help us with some history, especially if Coconut Creek doesn't send their trash there. Why is this big monstrosity of a landfill, why is it in Coconut Creek to begin with? Why there?
It's technically just outside of the Coconut Creek boundaries, but it impacts our city along with Deerfield Beach and Pompano to a significant degree. We're the ones that deal with the fallout of the smell, the birds, that everything that comes about from all, all the trash trucks coming in and out, the noise. We deal with the impacts, even though it's not technically within the boundaries of Coconut Creek.
So where is it? Deerfield or Pompano or?
I believe, I believe it's county land is my understanding. Please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is it's county land.
Is that correct Alfred?
That sounds correct, yes.
And tell, tell us what, what level of government made the decision to put that thing there? Who was it? You know?
I would assume it's the county.
Yeah, it was the Broward County Commission a long time ago, when very few people lived in Coconut Creek at the time.
And it was only 10 feet high also.
You've got, you've got the Turnpike, you've got the Monarch landfill, you've got a campus of Broward College, you've got a gambling casino, right? I mean, you've got, and you've got tremendous residential and commercial development on the horizon. Right, I mean, you've got and you've got tremendous residential and commercial development on the horizon as well. Nancy, I've got a question for you because of some emails that I've received and so forth, and I want to ask you now straight up. Nancy, is Mr. Delgado embellishing or exaggerating his work? Uh, on civic boards and civic activities in Coconut Creek, in your opinion?
Um. I I am concerned when he says things along the lines of he has served on just about every board that one can serve on. When there are some significant boards that unfortunately now have been sunset. That he has not served on such as the Education Advisory Board. Um, I I forgive me off the top of my head, I just remember that one in particular, um, the the DRC. There are some significant boards that that he has not served on, and I just think it needs to be clear to residents. That he has not served on every board. And um also to the extent of uh, I have significant concerns with what happened with our affordable housing advisory committee. Because uh, under his chairmanship. In the course of three months, it went from a monthly meeting committee that is required. For the city to receive ship funding through the Sodowsky Fund. To meeting as an ad hoc committee and it did not meet at all until twenty twenty, once it uh went to an ad hoc committee, so. Clearly, we have an issue with affordable housing in the city. And to know that the committee that's responsible for keeping an eye on that disappeared for a number of years is of concern.
Uh, I'll get to Mr. Delgado in just a second on on this point, but but clarify one thing, are you suggesting? I'm I'm not intimately familiar with this with this A hack, this Affordable Housing Advisory Committee evolution. But are you suggesting that moving it to an ad hoc committee resulted in the city losing access to state housing funds?
So I I'm not aware.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that question was for Nancy Fry.
I don't believe it did, but I would not want to see us put at risk for that and moreover. We need the funds, but also we need to make sure we are keeping an eye on affordable housing and anything that would put that at risk should be looked at.
Okay, Alfred, tell us about, first of all, is it true that you advocated? Basically downgrading the housing advisory committee to an ad hoc committee?
So, no, I I did not advocate that, ultimately, we work with the city staff and they indicate to us. Uh, when the meetings would be held and it's a consensus amongst the entire committee uh that decides when the when the uh when the committee meets. And I wasn't aware of that connection with regards to potentially losing funding as a result of that. So no, they it the, so the committee would gather, we set the next couple of meetings. Uh, as as we would, uh, but we did not say, yeah, we want to degrade this uh, this uh. Or diminish the number of meetings was to put it in jeopardy, there was no willful. Uh, or purposeful uh attempt to lose money, I don't think anybody that serves on that or that served on that committee or any board for that matter. They care about the city, these are residents that actually go about pursuing this. Uh, because they care about the city, the last thing they want to do is do any kind of harm to the city, number one. And number two, they're appointed by the commission. Um, so we had the the full backing of the commission in in what we were doing. And the residents as well, as well as the participants and none of them, I could tell you this a hundred percent, none of them are looking to do any harm to the city. If there's anything that we can obviously do better, I think anybody, myself included, is fully committed to doing so. And and I'm willing, I'm all ears, as I've told residents time and again, I'm all ears, that I I'm not going to be a perfect commissioner. What I do guarantee people is that I will come to them in humility. Rather than arrogance, I'm not gonna say I have all the answers, but I'll be smart enough to know when I don't know something and ask accordingly. So if there's something that I could do better, I'm all ears and I will do it better.
I just wanna, I I just wanna briefly uh go over something that that that's that's come up from Ms. Fry's campaign, which is. That that there's a, there's a sense in her campaign that you've sort of overstated your civic involvement. I'm I've quote, I've served on just about every city board one can serve on. A lot of city boards you've never served on, so.
Hmm.
It's, is it true that you're overstating your your activity in the city a little bit?
Well, I I tell people that I've served on just about, but not all of them, I don't claim that I've served on every one of them and and you know, if if residents. Have an issue um with how to characterize that. I'm knocking on doors, um, and they're more than welcome uh to to meet up with me to discuss and to and to get clarification. One of the other things is that I actually do. Lay out all the boards that I've served on, so I'm not just making some kind of a blanket statement and and trust me. You don't need to find out what boards I've served on, uh, you can actually quite easily find that in in the uh. The literature that we're hanging hand handing out as well as the the website.
All right, all right, and and uh, by the way, by the way, I mean, I I think. Others may disagree, endorsements are are overstated than in campaigns, I think, however. Nancy Fry listed a number of elected officials who have endorsed her candidacy. And I would say these are pretty well respected people in the community, at least among Democrats, Lauren Book, Jason Pizzo, Tina Polsky. Um, Marty Care, the property appraiser. Uh, what should voters, Mr. Delgado, what should voters? How should they process that information, leading Democrats have decided to support your opponent, not you?
Well, the 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 ultimate endorsement that I'm looking for is our residents endorsement, I think that's really what counts, um. Uh, you you can talk to uh elected officials as well as others, endorsements though and and inkling. Uh, of uh of what the the of who the candidate may be. Um, ultimately is not the decisive factor, I think the end up the endorsement that ultimately counts is gonna be Coconut Creek residents. And they've met with me, they, as a matter of fact, I was actually speaking to one resident. Uh, that I was laying out my my platform issue about uh opposition to the expansion of the turnpike. And this gentleman actually told me that, no, 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 he's all in favor of it, uh, he's a uh a truck driver. And so he said, the more lanes, the merrier, and at a certain point, I I told him, you know, we will respectfully disagree on this point. But nonetheless, he respected the fact that I, number one, had come and knocked on his door and number two, forthrightly told him. Look, I'm opposed to this, and at the end of the conversation, he actually said he would vote for me precisely for those two reasons. So I think the endorsement that counts is Coconut Creek residents at the end of the day.
Nancy, are you walking door to door in in Coconut Creek?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, and 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 I I I've worked on campaigns before, I understand um. That endorsements don't win elections, I I'm very clear on that, but I'm very proud of every endorsement that I have earned because. I did not get those because I'm just friends with someone, these are endorsements that I've earned by being active in the community. And uh active fighting on causes that I care about very deeply, and if you read the quotes from the folks that have endorsed me. Um, they they speak very strongly to my background and and the work that I will do as a commissioner. And I use and I just use that as a starting point. To give people context about me when I go talk to those voters and and the voter response has been tremendous and and I really. I'm so happy to be work uh knocking on these doors.
Do city commissioners in the city of Coconut Creek, do you have the option, are you able to hire? Full-time staff like a like a commission aide?
No.
Okay, all right.
Not, but but um, if I am elect, if I'm so lucky as to be elected, uh, I do intend on starting an internship program. To make sure that we are getting our young residents more involved earlier on and in a more in-depth level. To know what's going on in their local government, so that when they get to be a voting agent, when they're out. Buying their own home or renting their own home and living wherever they choose to live, and hopefully it'll still be in Coconut Creek. That they don't have to use voter education that we are going through right now, we're telling people there's an election coming up. These are the, this is what's on the ballot and they'll already know.
Okay, Nancy, are you currently employed, do you have a full-time job?
Yes, I'm an analyst with a company called Center for Human Capital Innovation.
What kind of, what kind of a company is that, what kind of an enterprise is that?
Uh, they do workforce training and analytics, uh, we go through, we train in such areas as diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, we set up trainings for companies to do with their employees and we do analytics on uh different data. That is brought in, we help set up IT strategies, uh, we do a lot of different things, because we have a lot of different clients.
How long did you work for Commissioner Steve Glassman at Fort Lauderdale?
Uh, I worked for him from March of twenty twenty one until July of twenty twenty two.
Okay. I bring that up because um, you know. It's a very big dynamic city, he's got his, uh, he's very vocal on almost every issue. We write a lot about stuff going going on at Fort Lauderdale, it's a very happening place. Um. A- a- and and I I guess I wanted to for a minute or so ask you uh what you learned, what skills you learned doing that job for sixteen months, it sounds like. That maybe prepare you for elective office?
Um, I learned a lot, I I could not detail all of it on this call, but I'll say first and foremost. Constituent services, learning. How to, and I've come, I've done customer service before, so it wasn't completely new to me, but from the government perspective of. Having constituents come to you with an issue, maybe and. Issues everything from at the individual level, having an issue with a permit, having an issue with code. All the way through to issues on properties that were being developed and working through and finding areas to compromise on. Uh, when being that sort of go between between, say, a developer and a resident or a group of residents and where their issues lie and and really. Having those negotiation skills and also really learning. About how to work with city staff and getting things accomplished and who to go to for what and what's the best routes and the best methods. For getting things done.
Okay. Alfred, give us. I know you're 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 an attorney and so and you have a way with words, but try try to keep your response to one minute or so. Tell us the similar kind of parallel question, tell us what in your non-political life, in your professional life. Best qualifies you for this position you're seeking?
So I think fundamentally, uh, non-professionally, you said?
I said non-politically is what I meant.
Non-politically, okay.
Never mind what, I I'm including your professional life, so.
Absolutely, so so number one, it fundamentally, it's a sense of empathy. Um, the the neighbors I know, um, the residents I've met with. I basically, I fundamentally care about them, I try to put myself in their shoes, it's one of the things that um that I try to do every day as an attorney. Is to put myself in the other person's shoes and and get a sense for, you know, where their life is at. The kind of jeopardy that they potentially face, right? And the fact that they just want to live a a a wonderful life here. Uh, in the city or in the United States, um, and ultimately do better for themselves and their children. So that's the fundamental factor is that when I when I see people that are like individuals that that are in South Creek, right? Uh, Sunshine Drive, I s- I I was actually out there uh this past weekend. Um, knocking on doors and they've got the turn, I mean, I, you know, I mentioned that I got the turnpike not far from 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 where I live. They've got it right there, a couple of hundred feet from where they live and they're talking about expanding into that area there and that. Breaks my heart. At the end of the day, we have to, that is what gives me the motivation to do what I'm doing. Is that we need somebody that is present, we need somebody that's prepared, I, from the moment I got here. I uh I uh joined the Citizens Academy, a beautiful program that the city has that shows you how the city works. Uh, and you go department by department and you meet the department heads, they tell you what they do, what each department does. And so you get a better understanding for how that that engine hums as productively as it does. Uh, but yeah, that's basically it, is the is the the empathy, the caring about the fellow person, uh, is fundamentally what prepared me. And then just in terms of uh just being active in in uh my community uh from before. I moved to to Coconut Creek uh in terms of uh protecting uh the neighborhoods. Um, in terms of uh when uh big uh, big corporate interests wanted to develop certain businesses. In areas where residents didn't want it, um, doing that and fighting against that, I think that that was key.
Nancy, have you sought or raised your hand and applied for any of these volunteer citizen boards in Coconut Creek?
So, most of them are disbanded as of last year, so we only have two advisory boards right now, um, the Parks and Rec and the Planning and Zoning Board. So there has not been an opportunity for me to do so, I am an active member of the ambassador program, which has been uh. Pretty much put into place in lieu of these advisory boards. Uh, I am a big advocate of bringing them back though, because I love the ambassador program, it's fantastic, it desperately needs to say. But it's an educational program, it's not advising. It's advising the constituents, it's not advising the commission, and I don't believe that a commissioner should be expected to be a subject matter expert on anything. And I think when we're looking at some of these issues like affordable housing, like the environment. We need to have an advisory board that's able to go in depth on policy. To be able to advise the commission and and the commissioner should be prepared and they should be educated on it as well, but. I know someone, for example, of, I have a strong background in gun violence, uh, advocacy. Or gun violence prevention advocacy, gun gun violence prevention activism. And there's a lot of nuance and there's a lot of just deep, deep policy dives that you have to do when you are in that realm. That an elected official that's expected to do. Be operating at the thirty thousand foot level and expected to negotiate policy for an entire city. Can't get necessarily to that level, but if they have a trusted advisory board to explain that to them. Then that will ma- help them make better decisions and so I I'm trying to advocate of bringing them back.
Okay, so is there, there's no charter review board in Coconut Creek?
I'm sorry, I was I was referring to to the ones that we're currently meeting, there there is a a few ad hoc boards, charter review being one of them. Uh, but they don't need again, I'd have to check the exact date, I don't believe they meet again uh for a little while.
Most, many cities have a police and fire pension advisory board, anything like that in Coconut Creek?
No, there was a public safety advisory board, that's one of the ones that was uh removed.
Okay, a a community appearance board.
You're listening to one from Fort Lauderdale, I feel like.
Okay, I know, I know.
I know, I heard that one from Fort Lauderdale, no, there is not.
Okay, by the way, uh, have the police and fire unions endorsed or will they be endorsing in this race?
My understanding is they have endorsed. And it's the gentleman that's not on the call right now.
Oh, okay, okay, let's talk about him for a second, and by the way, I want to emphasize, you know, he was given every opportunity to join in this. In this call with limited time, um, you know, we're going to um. Extenuating circumstances can arise, you know, a death in the family, an illness, but lots, we've been, we're very respectful of those kinds of situations. But in this case, we had two candidates in the immediately agreed to participate and the third did not, we decided to go forward. Uh, I'll start with you, Nancy Fry, um, is there anything? Uh, I'm talking about votes that John Brody has cast, priorities he's. Laid out or not laid out as a commissioner that you would do differently, can you draw a contrast between yourself and Mr. Brody only?
Um, I can't speak to specific votes, I can say in general. He presents himself as someone that. Asks for a lot of education to 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 figure out, way to put it, put it gently. Uh, and he very much on the dais espouses that he's still learning. That he needs more education, he needs to be um brought into things. And I think we need someone that that has that knowledge base and and has the background and the experience.
Okay, the same question for you, Alfred, uh, I I'm asking you to draw a distinction between yourself and your your candidacy and Mr. Brody only. Uh, is there anything he's done or not done that you would cite right now that you would have done differently?
Well, I I think ultimately, and and I want to say this, um, my interactions with the with Mr. Brody. Have been nothing but classy, uh, he, I think he's a, he's a um, he's just a classy guy. Um, in every interaction that I've had, so I want to say that first. Um, ultimately, I think it it's just that sense of focused preparation. Um, and and one of the things that I wanted to mention, um, Ms. Fry is correct. There've been numerous boards that have been sunset, the Citizens Academy is still rolling, uh, individuals, residents can still participate that uh to this day. Uh, participate in that to this day. Um, but just that focused preparation that from the time I got here, I did the Citizens Academy, I was fascinated by how the city worked. Uh, and then just serving on those boards, I think that that gives me the ability. To get going with that sense of urgency from day one.
Let me ask the question a slightly different way, Mr. Brody's been on the commission for well over a year. Uh, he's participating, he has the support of his colleagues, otherwise they wouldn't have appointed him. Why not, Mr. Delgado, why not just leave John Brody there? Why change?
I I think for for the reason I stated, we face an existential threat and I don't think uh in the in the in in the form of the turnpike expansion. And the landfill, and I can't say that enough. At the end of the day, we need to act with the necessary urgency uh and diligence to get those things checked. Reversed and ultimately put control back into the residents' hands and the and the surrounding cities. I don't think that we're moving fast enough or with sufficient vigor on those particular matters, so that's the reason why. I'm not gonna uh sit here and say John's a terrible guy, uh, engage in ad hominem attacks and therefore you should pick me, no. It's just a matter of getting it done with a sense of urgency that's necessary, because every day that goes by. F dot and the company that runs the landfill are there working hard and lobbying for their objective, which I feel is directly. It's it's contradictory to what we, the residents, need here in the city. And so I'm just gonna act with the same kind of vigor that those opposing forces are bringing to the table.
Nancy Fry, I've been watching Broward County government politics for a long time, one of the things that's that's sorely lacking, uh, in my opinion, this is, this is the opinion. Sector of the sunset. Uh, there's not enough regional cooperation among. Uh, there's not enough regional cooperation among, um, cities and among, among and between levels of government. DOT can, with a wave of its hand, say no to something Coconut Creek wants with this turnpike expansion. But it's harder to say no to Coconut Creek, Sunrise, Tammerac, Margate, Coral Springs, Parkland, all of which, much less directly, I concede, but are also going to be affected by this turnpike expansion. So what's, what's being done, what should be done, what could be done to mobilize the entire northwest quadrant of the county against this thing?
Absolutely. And first and foremost, I would like to just take a step back because Mr. Delgado is far more gracious than I am, and I, I apologize. I should have said that also. Nothing personal against Commissioner Brody and that, that he is a fantastic guy. And, but I just want, I had been trying to answer the question succinctly, so, uh, my apologies for uh, missing that point, but yeah, nothing personal against Commissioner Brody. Uh, to your question, uh, we just need to utilize, again, our networks. Like I said, I have a network, I have a network with local elected officials. I, I between working for Fort Lauderdale, all the activism I've done, I, I, again, to go back to the endorsements, I have endorsements from commissioners, uh, three of the commissioners in Coral Springs right now, um, so including the vice mayor. It's about utilizing Broward League of Cities and Florida League of Cities and doing that networking and just bringing everyone together. But it's, we have the infrastructure to coalesce everybody. We have, um, the, the, um, forgive me, I cannot remember the name off the top of my head, but there's a regular publicly noticed meeting of the Northwest, um, elected officials that meets regularly. That's a topic that needs to be continually hammered at every one of those meetings at Broward League of Cities. This needs to be made a priority because it does affect so many of the cities around Broward.
Okay, very good. By the way, you know, uh, we're about to wrap up here because we've been at this almost an hour. Uh, and I really appreciate your, your, uh, being with us and your, your attention to detail. This is the, this is not the end of the conversation. It's the beginning. I encourage both of you. We're not going to make a decision on endorsing in this race probably for, for another week to 10 days, maybe. I encourage both of you to follow up with me and with Dan Sweeney supplemental materials. Make your case. If you don't make your case, uh, no one else will make it for you. In fact, chances are someone else is trying to make a case against you. That's how politics works. You both, you both know that very well. So I appreciate, you've got a very interesting, dynamic community there. Um, you know, I, I remember a time when it was, when Coconut Creek High School was on double sessions. Uh, there were portable classrooms everywhere in Coconut Creek. You didn't have, you know, the big new high schools that you have today. So anyway, they've come a long way in a short period of time. I'm going to let both of you make a closing statement of about a minute each. And I'm just going to use my prerogative, I'm going to go in alphabetical order. So Mr. Delgado, you have the floor first, sir. Go ahead.
Sure. So again, the reason why I'm running for Coconut Creek City Commission is because I come at this, uh, from a perspective of service. And why service? Because I have empathy for everybody that lives here in the city, uh, both neighbors and residents who I've met, um, knocking on doors. Ultimately, I feel that whether you have a family or not, I think everybody here should have an opportunity to be able to grow in this city, to develop themselves to the full capacity of their abilities. And ultimately, if they do have a family, to be able to keep that family here. I think that the, the turnpike expansion, the land, the proposed landfill expansion as well are existential threats to our ability and our, um, our quality of life in this city. So I'm basically looking to fight for our residents, to represent them more effectively and with a sense of urgency that is needed, so that ultimately we can grow, we can thrive, and ultimately set a baseline of opportunity without a limit to success for every one of our residents.
All right. Thank you so much, Alfred. Nancy Fry, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And, uh, first of all, thank you to the Sun Sentinel for giving uh, all of us this opportunity and thank you for all you do to make sure you inform the community about what's going on in our local elections. Because as I said, it's about civic engagement. It's about the involvement of the community. I want to make sure that we stay an inclusive, innovative, progressive city, and that, that is a line directly from the city. That is our tagline. We need to make sure that our young families are getting involved and that we have someone forward-thinking on the dais that can represent youth, that can represent progress, and that will be able to make the decisions for the city to get us not just past these issues we have now, but going forward into the future and making sure we are planning for 10, 15, 20, 30, 50 years down the line. And I come with the background, I come with the experience, both at the municipal level and, uh, from the community activism level to be able to make the changes we need and to keep Coconut Creek the city that we all love and adore so much. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much to both of you for your time and, and effort and the responsiveness to our questions. And thanks for the questionnaires. Best of luck to both of you. Thanks.